Yeah, yes. Welcome, everybody. We'll start with a roll call.
Okay. Oh, would help if I put, actually put you guys in here. Look at that. Commissioner Lazar?
Present.
Commissioner Benson?
Present.
Oh, Lord, Commissioner Meyer?
Present.
Sorry. I'm doing this remembering. Commissioner Kraft?
Here.
And Commissioner Freitas?
Present.
Thank you.
We will do a salute to the flag. Commissioner Benson will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Approval of minutes for our November meeting.
I read them. They look good to me. I'll move approval.
Thank you.
And I will second the motion.
Thank you. I think we can just have a consensus vote on that. Yes, to everyone here? Yes, yes?
Yep.
Great.
Yes.
Thank you. Oral communications are for anyone has something that is not on our agenda tonight that they would like to discuss. Okay, thank you. We will close oral communications. And it looks like we are starting a new public hearing tonight for Lumbah Hills, Southwood Unit Number Six Development Agreement.
Yes, and our newest Associate Planner is here to present. Let me just...
Hi Commissioners, my name is Aubrey Richardson and I'm the new Associate Planner. And tonight you will be considering a development agreement for Lumbah Hills, Southwood Unit Number Six. The development agreement will affect a subdivision previously approved in 2007 near the city's southern boundary.
Aubrey, just a second. I realized I did not share it with Zoom. So I'm not sure if they can see your PowerPoint.
I can see the project location slide.
Oh, good. Okay. Sorry, go ahead.
Okay. A closer look shows of the vacant lot for the proposed subdivision east of the existing Lumbah Hills subdivision. The red outlines the existing parcel impact by the proposed project. Application SDO3-003 was conditionally approved in 2007, wherein the project subdivided nineteen relatively flat hilltop acres into fifty-six new lots ranging in sizes from sixty-five hundred square feet to forty-nine thousand square feet. The Planning Commission approved the subdivision in January 2007, subject to forty conditions of approval and nineteen SEQA mitigation measures. The City Council endorsed the approval in February 2007 with the removal of one of the forty conditions. The proof map, the proof map was set to expire in February of 2009, but the Great Recession hit and the state legislature enacted a number of subdivision map extensions. This resulted in a new expiration date of February 2016. Since 2016, the city has issued two statutory exemptions. The most recent extension was approved by the Planning Commission in 2021 and extended it for an additional year. Now, the map is set to expire February 20th, 2023, and there are no more legislative or statutory exemptions the project is eligible for. A development agreement is proposed to extend the life of the approved subdivision map for another ten years. The proposed development agreement is included as attachment to in your agenda packet. The proposed agreement would give the applicant a vested right to develop the project for a period of ten years. It requires development to be undertaken consistent with the conditions of approval, the SEQA mitigation measures, as well as a general plan, zoning code, and Humboldt Low Impact Development Stormwater Manual. Then, agreement includes a five-year benchmark, requiring four of the conditions of approval to be completed within five years of approval of the agreement, including an engineered grading and drainage, drainage plan, an engineered improvement plan, including, at a minimum, sidewalks, curbs, pavements, signs, water, sewer, drainage improvements, and ADA requirements. A phasing plan map that indicates the timeline and order of the subdivision improvements as it relates to the recreation of the final map and lot development. And lastly, a subdivision improvements agreement. These four documents must be reviewed and approved by the city engineer. The development agreement is a legislative act that must be approved by ordinance. The Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the City Council to approve or deny the proposed development agreement. City Council will hold a public hearing during which the draft development agreement and ordinance will be introduced and public testimony will be taken. This will be held on December 20th, 2022. At a subsequent meeting in January 2023, council can take action to approve the development agreement by adopting the ordinance, and the ordinance will go into effect after thirty days. To approve a development agreement, it must be found consistent with the city's general plan, including the housing element. The city's housing element intends to address the city's regional housing needs allocation, or RHNA, to construct nine-hundred-and-fifty-two new residential units during the Housing Element planning period of 2019 through 2027. The development agreement will facilitate the creation of fifty-six lots zoned for residential development on one of the last large undeveloped unconstrained properties in the city, ultimately aiding the city to meet its RHNA goal. Between the years of 2010 and 2018, an average of fourteen units per year were created with a net total of a hundred-and-twenty-four units during that time period. A fifty-six unit subdivision is a relatively large development for the city and would significantly impact the housing supply. Housing Element Goal H-2, the city government actively facilitates the creation of a range of new affordable and market-rate housing units to accommodate future growth and to address the needs of all socioeconomic segments of the community. And as discussed in the report, staff believes the development agreement furthers this and other housing element goals and is otherwise consistent with the 2040 general plan. Based on the analysis in the staff report, staff recommends you hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution recommending that the City Council approve the development agreement. I prepared a slide with a suggested moment that we can pan back to at the appropriate time. But for now, this concludes staff's presentation and we are available for any questions as well as the applicant and the representative. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, have questions for staff?
Yeah, I have, I have just a couple of questions before we, before we discuss among ourselves and hear more public comment. So, so first off, just, you know, welcome to the city of Eureka, Aubrey, and good job. All right. So I just want to be, be sure that I understand that the benchmark documents that you talk about that will be due after five years, they won't come before the commission again, and City Council will have already approved it, so it's really just the city engineer at that point will be the only one having any review authority over this project as it further develops in, in a ten-year period if granted?
Yes, the city engineer would be the one to review and approve those plans.
I don't have another question at this time, so if another commissioner does, go ahead.
Would you agree that the development agreement that we have, the draft of tonight, is the same development agreement that was originally approved with just amendments made to extend the term? Besides the five benchmark items, I just wanted to know. I didn't, I didn't audit it, but is there anything different besides that?
I'm going to defer that question to Kristen, the Principal Planner.
Yes, it's the same project that was approved in 2007. The development agreement does mention that they need to be consistent with the current code and current LID manual because the original conditions are, for stormwater, are a bit outdated now, but otherwise it's the same.
So, would it be safe to say that the project essentially, I, I didn't see anything in the development agreement that reg, that, that seemed to be a concession or an offer by the developer to the city. I only saw concessions made by the city in terms of extending the life of the map beyond the normal term under state law.
That's correct. What we're getting out of it is the housing.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that I wasn't missing something.
So, this may be a better question for the applicant, and if you think that, just say so. In some of the letters that, that were received, I think there was a legitimate point made that calling out walkability for this project is kind of stretching it. If we grant that point, would your opinion still be that it's supported by the city's general plan? And related things?
And Kristen, if you want to correct me on this one, you can. I am, I would say yes. The project is required and always has been required to install public infrastructure like sidewalk. And we spoke with the traffic engineer earlier this afternoon, and there is a bike lane on Fairway Drive. And in the future, they might potentially install more public infrastructure or bike lanes in that area.
Yeah, I, I get it that the neighborhood itself is pretty walkable. I would just say that in the planning world, that tends to refer at least equally to, I can walk to the store, I can walk to my church, that kind of stuff. I'm not throwing shade. I live on Humboldt Hill. I, I drive into Eureka a lot. I'm just trying to find out if, if we grant the point that this is not walkable in that sense, does it still fit with the general plan?
I believe so. The housing element, the, the general plan basically assumes that, you know, development in Eureka is good for walkability if you, not necessarily walkability, but reduced vehicle miles traveled if you look at where else people might live in single-family homes. And the housing element says, one of the strategies is developing all undevelopable, I mean, all developable land that's still undeveloped in the city before annexing additional land, so.
Okay, good point. All right, I appreciate it.
I have a follow-on question, just to help us understand what walkability means. I don't want to assume that I, I know that I have some notion on my head, but it may not be what's in, 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 in your heads. What I did note was that it's, you know, even though we got letters from, from different stakeholders that indicated that it was, you know, four miles walk to any place, it's actually just 1.3 miles to Grant School, two miles to Henderson Center, 2.8 miles to Eureka High School, so it seemed that, you know, they may be, having been using a different metric, but I'm just curious from planning, from staff's point of view, what does walkability mean in terms of, in terms of safety and corridor and distance? And help us get our heads around that a little bit better.
Typically, in the planning world, a quarter mile or less is determined walkable for, for the general public. That's when people will be willing to walk places typically, in general. I did also want to mention that there's a long-term vision for a Eureka Loop Trail that would go by this area out, you know, through the golf course, out to the highway and connect to the waterfront trail. I mean, that's a long-term vision, but it is a vision of the cities.
And that would indeed be a quarter mile or so from Lumbah Hills down to a loop trail that went through the golf course and through Martin Slough down to the California Coastal Trail.
I would say that would make the area more bikeable. Also, I see Commissioner Freitas has her hand up. I don't know if you can... Oh, you can go ahead, Commissioner Freitas?
I was wondering if the applicant had submitted, you know, a rationale for requiring the extension. Again, if it was in the packet, I missed it, but, you know, is there some specific, you know, burden to the applicant that they are tying the request to or, or not?
We did not request a written explanation from the applicant of, of why they need the extension. We've anticipated it since the extension they received a year ago, that they would not be able to complete all the conditions of approval and vest the map, record the map ahead of February of 2023, so we anticipated this development agreement occurring. But the, the applicant is here.
I do have another question. I, I think this is, so we do have deputy counsel today? That's exciting. But this is also a question for staff, so I read 515162. I even read the 2007 version of 15162, and it seems to read pretty much the same, which does tie our hands with respect to SEQA, though we have received a lot of comments about why we should be reconsidering the project under SEQA. And I guess my question, one of my questions is, SEQA is not the same law than it was in 2006. But a read of the things that you have to hang it on to revisit environmental review would suggest that that may not be a change that actually warrants revisiting the document. And I'd be interested to make sure that we feel comfortable with that, so in particular, that you know, major revisions would be required or substantial changes in the project are proposed. You know, something like complying with stormwater requirements that didn't exist in 2006, I don't think that, in my mind, rises to the level of substantial changes. That's inevitable, that rules will change. But I want to be confident that we do feel comfortable that we are not obligated to do further environmental review, especially in light of the fact that the statute that governs environmental review is not the same statute. And VMT is the elephant in the room, I think, here. That was not considered when this project was approved.
Yes, and City Attorney Luna, we had lots of conversations with her just to make sure that she was confident that we didn't need to do any sort of subsequent environmental document, and she was confident in that. And as you mentioned, Attorney, City Attorney Black is on Zoom, and I'd like to defer to him.
Sure, I'm happy to speak to this. I did spend several hours with this today, and I reviewed City Attorney Autumn Luna's opinion notation on this. I think we both share the view that these suggested changes just don't rise to the level that a court would require the city to do an SEIR. And the cases really kind of trend in that direction, that SEQA, if it's properly done in the first instance, should not have to be done and redone. I think we all know that there, there are near annual statutory and regulatory changes. And if we applied those changed rules to past SEQA determinations and, and applied them such that we'd have to do subsequent environmental analysis, I just, I think it would be turmoil. I think it would be very difficult for private parties who have investment in their projects and cities which have substantial time and staff investment, Planning Commission investment, City Council investment in projects. If they had to be redone on the bases that are, have been suggested tonight, at least the two that I've seen, and I don't know that there are others, but the two that I've seen just don't rise to that level when read in the context of a multitude of court cases that basically take up very similar arguments or arguments at least of equivalent impact and have denied requests for subsequent review. So that's our, that's our position. Obviously, you know, we know that applying the law like this is kind of a predictive enterprise, and that is trying to figure out what a judge would do if, if the case was brought to, to him or her in proper context, and of course, that's always a bit iffy, but that's our opinion. And I think it's solidly based. Thank you.
Any further questions for staff? All right, we'll open it up for a public hearing. Just as a reminder, please state your name and city of residence, as well, you have three minutes. And generally, we would allow the applicant to speak first, and I see Mr. Barnum is here, if he would like to speak.
Good evening, I'm Bill Barnum. Live on Artino in Eureka. So I'm ready for questions.
Do you have a statement? And then perhaps we could come back to you with questions when we end the public hearing?
Well, I think what I've heard is, what is the rationale for the request? So we'll start with that. We need to put this entire thing into some historic context. So please forgive me, it takes a few minutes to tell this story. My, my dad, Bob Barnum, who's now ninety-five years old, at the age of fifty, excuse me, thirty-seven, age of thirty-seven, purchased a three-hundred-and-twenty acre tract. We all know the boundaries of it. It goes from Campton Road to Elks Club. He purchased that with Fred Lumblade Senior. Years later, 1959 and 1960, the two of them donated sixty acres each year to the city for the golf course. The city wanted the additional area, and so they annexed. You bet. If we could get the map up again of the project area, that, that will sort of jump off the page. So their early development occurred, if you go back to the one that shows the city of Eureka, there you go, where the star is. So you see that area, sort of south-central extension of Eureka. Some of you know the neighborhood known as Ridgecrest, which is near the south end of F Street before you descend into Fairway Drive. They developed that part, and then they actually built Fairway Drive with a D8 cat, built out to where the golf course clubhouse is, which they built and donated to the city. They didn't build over the bridge over Martin Slough to Herrick. City did that later. And of course, that created F Street and the Fairway, which is such a popular arterial today. The earliest proposals for development of the plateau that we're talking about was in early 1960s. The original proposal was for College of the Redwoods to be located there. And there'd be a football stadium in the valley to the north. That didn't happen. Part of the community wanted to see it at Beatrice. So 1965, Lumblade and Barnum families were approached by a builder from Reading. And he drew a seventy-two parcel map and proposed that. And contracts were made, and then he promptly went bankrupt. So Mr. Lumblade Senior suggested to my father, why don't you partner up with my son Fred? So I think they were about thirty-eight and twenty-four or five at the time. And they built out that seventy-two lot subdivision, which is what you see coming up Lumblade Drive and then going off to Boyle and Patricia. This map is called Southwood Unit Number Six, so it's the sixth additional subdivision adding on. So if you drive to the end of Lumblade Drive and look east, that's what you're looking at. Now, off to the southeast of that, there's a 2.2-mile-long ridge top that goes to Ridgewood Drive, and that's what was called about the Forrester Gill Project back in nineteen, in the 1990s, part of the Eureka Community Plan. So the bottom line for Lumbah Hills has about two-hundred-and-twenty homes in it. The absorption rate's about four a year. So to be perfectly blunt, it's not a very profitable operation. And thus, it's not very attractive for the Lumblade and Barnum families to put the several million dollars of infrastructure into the ground until there's a calculation that there's a reasonable rate of return to be expected. Otherwise, you take your money and you buy a federal T-bill and make something on that. So it really just comes down to when will it be a profitable investment? What will the absorption rate be? And the like. So that's a broad view of the rationale, is we haven't gotten to that point. We applied for this map, I think, in 2000. We didn't get it approved until 2007, so that was an arduous time delay. And then, of course, we had the Great Recession, and we've had map extensions since then. We do see some changes in Humboldt coming, everybody does. Cal Poly Humboldt, the Nordic Farm, Offshore Wind. So there may become an economy within the next ten years that'll make this a worthwhile venture. But until then, we'd like to retain our vested rights and extend the life of the map.
Thank you, and you will be available to answer questions.
Sure.
Thanks.
We applied for this.
Thank you. Yeah. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak? I see a hand raised from Mr. Fisk.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Colin Fisk, I'm the Executive Director of CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. We did send in some written comments, so I hope you got a chance to review those. And I wanted to address a few different subjects, I guess. One is that I do think that it's a pretty big stretch to argue that this would be walkable as, you know, as, as the city's new general plan calls for. I also think that concluding that it is in proximity to schools and other destinations is pretty hard to support. I think this gets at the issue that we raised regarding the environmental review, which is that circumstances have changed. And, and of course, I'm not an attorney, but this is not something that I heard you all discuss with regard to the environmental review, which is the issue of circumstances. And it's not about, you know, the yearly sort of shift or drift in regulations. This is a sixteen-year gap in which an entirely new general plan and zoning code have been adopted for the city. And of course, part of SEQA review involves reviewing impacts on land use and planning. And so I think that shift is something that would call for a new review. And I guess my last point is that I don't think that, you know, some delay, which would be necessitated by conducting additional review, puts any housing production in jeopardy, because as you just heard, you know, this is about extending the right for ten years. There's no imminent plan to develop housing. So I think I would just encourage you to do what, in my view, is the right thing and go ahead and, and sort of bring this project into the 2020s and, and review it by current standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Some people just entered the meeting, so I want to clarify, this is the public comment for the Lumbah Hills subdivision development agreement. And anybody on Zoom who would like to speak for public comment for that can raise their hand. I see Jen Calt from Humboldt Baykeeper.
Yeah, hi. Thank you for, for taking my comments. I missed a little bit of the presentation. I was in the waiting room on Zoom, but I also submitted comments on this project, and Humboldt Baykeeper is not opposed to the project, but we, we do think that... Baykeeper is not opposed to the project. But we, we do think that additional SEQA review is, is called for in large part because the project comes very close, if not actually touches Martin Slough, which has been listed under the Clean Water Act, Section 303D for stormwater runoff, including particularly bacteria pollution. And, you know, we, we know it, the city is in the process of developing ordinance to protect the waterways. And, and you know, this is, is decades overdue. And so, you know, just having a, a modern environmental review would, would ensure that the waterways are protected and, you know, probably some other things that might come up. But just want to clarify, this is not about trying to block a project. It's just about mitigating impacts that have been getting, you know, worse and worse over the past couple decades. And, and we really need to protect the waterways and Humboldt Bay. So thank you for taking my comments. I submitted this, this comment in an email too. So hopefully you already got that. Thank you.
Thank you. And we did receive it. Thank you for your comments. Look like anyone else is wanting to speak. So I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commissioners for discussion.
I actually do have one question for Mr. Barnum that I'd like to ask.
You bet.
So you provided some historical context. I'm hoping you can provide some geographic context. And is this 19 acres kind of what is left that, that you have, you know, plans to develop? And by plans, I mean, you know, submitted kinds of stuff?
That's correct. Yeah, this, this, this completes the ownership on the plateau.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I'll start us off. I was, I was waiting for someone else. But I'll just go. Yeah, I've got a number of ideas here and, and comments for discussion within the commission. And I would welcome also staff to, to weigh in on some things. Yeah, I mean, I'm certainly concerned about the currency of the mitigated negative declaration. You know, having developed those documents and been the, the lead applicant on projects, I've, I've so often heard 10 years. I've been, I've been told that we had to go back and do the work again after, after 10 years. It's not, it's not legislated. It's not, but I, you know, depending on currency and what has changed, and if there have been gaps and shifts in, in, in review, I think, you know, being current in the 2020s is, is important. If, if we choose not to go that direction, then, then I went and I looked very carefully at the mitigated negative declaration because then the conditions of approval and the mitigations in that, I wanted to make sure that they were robust enough if we decide that to forego further environmental review. Is there enough, are there enough teeth or enough surveys required as mitigations that is going to help get us to, to a level of, of currency? And is the, the review by the engineering department going to be adequate for some of those? And, and I come up with some questions about whether, whether that would be adequate. I'm looking through the 2006 mitigated negative declaration and, you know, looking at, at its age at this point, 18 years old. And if we're looking at 10 years of extension, I mean, we're, we could be looking at, you know, 20 to 25 years, you know, difference in time. And I was curious, for example, there were three groupings of maple leaf checker bloom. I mean, 18 years is a long time for those plants to be in more places or to be gone altogether. I'm not pretending that I've gone out there and surveyed them on a biological level, but that was one of the issues, you know, that, that, that was of concern. I didn't see anything in the mitigations for, you know, for bird nesting surveys and other kinds of biological surveys that I would typically see right, right before construction and the issuance of, of final permits. But I'm not sure how that's going to work. So I want to make sure that, that if we need to add conditions, that, you know, this would be a time to, to talk about them. I saw some, a number of questions around or, you know, recommendations by California Department of Fish and Wildlife for improvements in the natural drainage wage leading to the enhanced Martin Slough. And so as, you know, someone who's spent 10 years of their life working on the Martin Slough Restoration Project, certainly, you know, looking at the stakeholders around that project. And, and so, so drainage and especially pollutant, potential pollutants from urban, urban sources that included bacteria and just further erosion sedimentation would sort of be counterproductive to that amount of public money and NOAA, NOAA money and California Department of Fish and Wildlife money and NOAA Fisheries money. And so I want to make sure that we're protecting that investment, especially since it came from the applicant's families originally. You know, it's, it's closing that, it's closing that loop that we're not doing any harm. And I also, you know, noticed, you know, on, on site that there's, you know, a, a large pile of relic, you know, stumps that I've, that I've had permission to go on that property and look at those stumps for the Martin Slough project. But I, and I did notice of, of when, when looking at them, that it's provided, large watered debris has provided really good habitat for salamanders and insatina and the like. And so it just, and I didn't see anything in the mitigated negative declaration around surveying for those, those kinds of species and what might have happened in the 18 years since then. So it just brings up a few, a few ideas there, just to make sure that we're thorough. And then I also saw that the, in resolution in the 2007, one item 11, that the site is not economically viable timber parcel due to its relatively small size. So, you know, in terms of forestry source, that wasn't really, not, not well addressed. It was just sort of written off that it's not, not really viable at this time. But, you know, these lots are abut viable timberlands on, on three sides. And I've talked to two foresters and one said it's Site One Redwood and another said it's Site Two Redwood. But, you know, suffice to say, it's really good land for growing forest resources. And, and it's seen that the mitigated negative declaration did not, you know, just did not really address the, the timber potential there. I was just saying that the remaining timber is not economically viable to harvest because it was just harvested around, you know, it, it had been cut prior to the mitigated negative declaration. So it didn't appear that there was a lot. And it hasn't come, and, and we know that the rotation is, you know, 80 years plus. So it's not that we have a standing forest now as well. Let me see. Also, is one, a question I have for staff is item 16 says that stormwater facilities will reduce the potential future stormwater impacts to a less than significant level. And another one said that it's going to enhance it. And so I'm just sort of curious whether the stormwater design is, is going to enhance stormwater or whether it's simply going to mitigate pollutants that could be present in stormwater. I know it's, it's sort of just mincing words there. What's an enhancement and what's a mitigation? But I, but I think what I've saw, looking at Department of Fish and Wildlife, they're looking for enhancements. They're looking for improvements. They're looking for that, for the stormwater conveyance that leads down the slope to Martin Slough to actually have restoration and enhancement done on it, not just kind of standard engineering BMPs and drop inlets and filtration and the like. And so I'm just looking for that opportunity. And then, I'm almost done. And then just looking, the mitigated negative declaration talked about cultural resources. And TBR stated in that at this time, they do not foresee any conflicts with cultural resources. So it got a pass from the tribe at, at that time. And, but it seems to me that 18 years have passed. Tribal staff has, has changed. I know that, that the tribe continues to professionalize themselves with, with their tribal heritage protection officers. And it just seems like development on unceded Wiat land, you know, bears asking for consent and consultation perhaps more than once. And, you know, with 18 years, it might be worthwhile to ask them what they think again, if anything has changed from their, their perspective. Anyway, those are some of my concerns around this. And I'll leave it to other commissioners.
I was just gonna say, I'm looking at Google right now. It looks like the harvest occurred sometime between 2009 and 2010. And it looks like it represents an area of 13 acres, which would be far more of a conversion than could occur without, you know, being associated with the subdivision itself of a single parcel. So it certainly was done in anticipation of future development, but development that's yet to emerge. But just, just so you know, it seemed like it came in the wake. Maybe Mr. Barnum would like to speak to that.
I can mention that as part of the approval, they received a conditional use permit for that timber harvest.
And Marc Andre was our RPF and he handled the timberland conversion under the Forest Practice Rules.
Right. He did a conversion permit, not a less than three acre conversion.
Correct.
Yeah. I guess I'll pile on. Sorry. No, I, and the main concern I have, I mean, there's, I agree with Commissioner Benson. It is a little bit, it's not a little bit. It, it's, it's a stretch to rely on an environmental document. I, you know, I spoke with attorney friends and others about, you know, development agreements. I guess, to me, the period of time covered by the original development agreement is inviolate. Like whatever happened during that time, there's no revisiting it. It's, we committed, it was a contract between two parties. But that's not the time we're living in right now. We're, we're approaching the end of that time. And so we're going to jump from one period to the next period for another increment of 10 years. And that is a little bit of a, we're exposed in that transition between the first 10 years and the next 10 years. And I think that is cause for concern. But the thing that really I struggle with amongst the development agreement is that there's a protection of the developer against, like for instance, development fees. You know, part 2.6 of the agreement that they don't have to, once we lock it in, you know, whatever increase happens in the coming years, they don't have to pay that increase. They pay whatever it was once the agreement's executed. I think that's too big a concession. I don't think that's something, I, I'd be interested in hearing from the ownership if that's really going to stymie their ability to pursue the project. It seems like a cost that could be passed along. Otherwise, the consequence of not paying your fair share is that everybody else who's a customer pays the share. And why would we want to do that? And so that's one that I'd be interested in seeing if that's something we can get some movement on, just in terms of that. And of course, we're making a recommendation. So it's really just, in my opinion, if we do make a recommendation for this to be re-executed and renewed, that I don't, for one, I'm not convinced that that's something that needs to be included. So that's my pile on. I, I could certainly speak to others, but I'd be interested to hear from some of the other commissioners about how well this sits with them.
Well, I agree. It's been a long time, right? So things change. And I think the environmental part is concerning in ways. It sounds like, according to the city attorney, that it's not. But yeah, things do change. So, but I am curious, at the point when they actually start construction, there will be reviews by, it sounds like it's near waterways or is that going to flag reviews by Fish and Wildlife or any other departments that are going to have a say as to some of the environmental impacts at that time?
So the development is on a hilltop and it's, the parcels are avoiding 20% slopes and higher. So it's above this waterway that's part of the Martin Slough watershed. And there is no impacts, direct impacts to wetlands. So I do not believe it triggers any review by other agencies. But I forget what I was going to say. We did refer the development agreement to the agencies. And we just received a request from CDFW for all the documents. They, they do have a newer person. So I don't know if they, that might be part of the reason we didn't get any further comments from them. But we didn't receive any comments after referring this out. We did refer this out also to the, the Wiat tribes. We, we also referred it out in 2021 when we did that one-year extension. And they did request that the condition of inadvertent discovery get modified. And, and we did modify it according to their request.
And they had no comments for this current?
Correct.
Thank you.
Can you answer when the referrals were circulated in relation to tonight?
I sent out the referrals almost a month ago now.
Okay. I mean, from my perspective as a planner, that's a pretty short turnaround time for an agency. I mean, it's nice when you get them, but you can't always rely on. But whether we would have received negative feedback from CDFW or not is speculation. So, but that's pretty short, in my opinion. And I guess we're making a recommendation. So they'll have another chance to provide comments before the city council takes action, right?
And it's, it's two meetings of the city council.
Clarification question, Kristin. The input you got from the Wiat tribe, is that reflected in what we're showing today? Like that would buy, buy, be bound into this?
Yes, the development agreement specifically calls out the 2021 resolution that includes that updated condition. I see Commissioner Fridas has her hand up.
Commissioner Benson, did you want to, Commissioner Fridas?
Thanks. Yeah, I have been kind of thinking about, you know, the, the concerns of the project. And it's been helpful to hear other commissioners' thoughts on it first. I also did receive the CRTP letter. I did not yet review the Baykeeper one. But I would say, you know, my concerns about it not being, you know, a super walkable infill site are pretty minor. You know, it's within city limits. It was planned for this use. And it's, you know, served by adjacent utilities and it will use mostly existing roads. So I think that, you know, to meet some of our higher, you know, above moderate income arena, you know, the regional housing allocation numbers, sites like this are important, especially if we aren't going to truly sprawl, you know, outside of existing city limits. So I'm not against the project, you know, and it doesn't sound like some of the public commenters are either necessarily. For me, it's really just a question of whether or not the commission feels like there are other conditions that might be appropriate to bring the environmental review up to speed if necessary. And I know Commissioner Benson mentioned a couple ideas. And I, you know, would be supportive of exploring what some of those could look like. But I'm also definitely, you know, hearing what our legal counsel is saying about, you know, the need for an applicant to have a certain amount of certainty when they move forward, you know, with a project. They've been through this once. Granted, it was a long time ago. And, you know, as another member of the commission said too, this would be a good opportunity though, to reevaluate that before we enter into another development agreement. So I guess I'm just kind of highlighting the things that have resonated with me that I've heard so far. And kind of where I'm landing is I think I'm, you know, willing to support what staff's recommending here. But I'm also interested to hear if there are other specific conditions to protect, you know, the environment that may not have been added previously that we could tack on now.
Thank you. Commissioner Benson?
I, I like where Commissioner Fridas is going there. I personally am loathe to send the applicant through SEQA again. But a handful of focus conditions, I think. And again, recognizing we're making a recommendation here. I'd be comfortable And again, recognizing we're making a recommendation here. I'd be comfortable with that. Classic situation here where we've got good against good. We need housing. We wanna protect Martin Slough. So I, I think that that's would be how I would support us going. And I'm hoping we don't take forty minus one conditions to eighty minus one conditions, but you know, I, I could see, like, the two or three things that Commissioner Benson pointed out being added as conditions, and in general, I am supportive of the project.
Okay, yeah. I'm also supportive of the project, even though I bring up many, a number of points. I, you know, this, you know, I don't wanna be in this position of, you know, one hand giveth and one hand taketh away for the applicant, and certainly the city has supported this, this project, and and it's, and it meets, it meets needs, and I don't wanna sort of, you know, taketh away with the other hand, you know, at the last moment by putting up roadblocks unnecessarily. You know, but I also, you know, it seems to me that this project is, you know, every project has its sort of Goldilocks zones, if you let me be whimsical for a moment, not that this isn't a serious topic, but, you know, it's, it's, you know, when things are, when everything's aligned and it's just right, and, but we're sort of in the Cinderella zone instead of the Goldilocks zone here, where Cinderella has been at the bar, you know, at the, at the, the bar, the, you know, at the ball a little bit too long. And, and so we're, you know, we're in a situation where we're, we're keep, we're kicking this down the road, but we're losing some ground in terms of its currency. And, you know, that just seems to be, that's my summary of, of the rub with it, why I'm not just jumping up and down, saying, yes, let's, let's move right ahead. To, to address what I would be happy with in terms of having currency, you know, if, I'm really happy to hear that the referrals went out a month ago. I know that's a short time, but I think if the appropriate environmental surveys are, are requested by the referral agencies, then, then, then those, you know, I'd like to see those be honored before, you know, City Council finally, you know, approves this. I don't, I let, I would rather let that be their business than our business, to try to create those conditions, you know, specifically. I think if the agency's requested, if it's important enough, if they see there being species of special concern that are important enough for them to, to alert the city that that would be important, you know, I'm willing to let that be. There, I do have one sort of pet issue that I didn't bring up, and so I'm gonna take this moment to do it. In the 2007 Resolution, Item 24, a condition of approval required the development of a 1.26 acre neighborhood park, which I've been to and visited, and it was voluntary, voluntarily increased to 1.4 acres. So the community gave even more land, and the mitigated negative deck of 2006 didn't really create any mitigations for recreation, and I, and I thought that there should be more teeth in this. It was, you know, the community made this happen. The city didn't make it happen. The community made it happen. But, but the park, however, still lacks being named or placed on a city parks map, or made clear that, that it's a, that the public can use it, and and a later proposal of doing that was voted down by the Open Space Parks and Recreation Commission due to the longest line I'd ever seen out of an OSB meeting in, in ten years of serving on that committee. And it was Lumbar Hills residents not supporting that a pub, that a public park or that park be named, or be called out in any particular way because it would attract those people. You know, to, to use words that I heard a lot that night, and, you know, demonstrating sort of a sense of exclusivity of that, of that neighborhood and protectionism, and, and the like. And so that one condition that I would like to see approved is formalizing that, that neighborhood park into a more formal park with appropriate signage and mapping, and that it could avail itself on the maintenance, and that the city might provide it, et cetera, and that might be a mitigation for, for the recreation impacts. So I'd like to see those two things happen. I'd like to see environmental surveys as requested by the agency, and I'd like to see that the neighborhood park that was created as a mitigation for this project actually reach its full potential of it being known that it's there and usable.
So we're making a recommendation, so we can include the recommendation things, but I guess from a standpoint of surveys and other things, I struggle if, I feel like we need our recommendation to be informed, and to say, we recommend that you execute, approve this agreement provided X, Y, and Z. Well, we're never gonna know what the results of X, Y, and Z are, you know, they're gonna be in the future, so our recommendation can't be assured. Because if you do find something in a survey that causes a project design change, well, that's gonna have to happen after conceivably the project, the, the point of approval has been passed. So I struggle a little bit. It, it feels to me like we either think that we have everything we need to make an informed decision, and so does the City Council, and therefore our recommendation is X, or we don't have what we need, and we therefore recommend to the council that before they take action, they require the developer to do X, Y, or Z. Like, I don't think we can defer that, but I'd be interested in staff because that seems to me problematic, the, to put off. And, you know, to that end, there's a condition in the approved project that says that, you know, well, potential impacts resulting from residential densities might exceed, oh, shoot, it's something about the, the capacity of Lumbe Drive, I guess. It's expected without some level of improvements to intersection Lumbe Drive with Fairway Drive may need improvements, but those will have to be worked out, to me, between the engineering division and the developer. That's kind of where that whole... So I don't know that we can, we, we close the door on the public's forum for considering for themselves whether it's adequate, once the development agreement's executed. So that's where I'm struggling. How do we make a recommendation without having those things in hand at the time? But am I wrong? Is, or am I getting, or I'm mixing things up?
I heard from Commissioner Benson that he was concerned about birds, rare plants, and potentially, like amphibians, or and, I mean, we could add a, the, the bird thing is, the typical condition is avoid the bird nesting season if feasible, and if not, then have a qualified expert survey for birds ahead of construction, and if a bird nest is found, you create a buffer and you wait for the fledglings. So that's the type of thing where we could condition it specifically, like, what happens if a bird is discovered? Because in that case, you just wait for the nest to be abandoned, and then you can continue. But for the rare plants, what happens if they discover rare plants?
Then they have to try to avoid it, first of all, and then mitigate for it if there's no way to avoid it by transplanting, replanting. There's a mitigation ratio, and and then you need someone who has the certification to transplant rare plants, not just anyone can do it.
I guess to my point, that would need to be made explicit at the time. All the X, Y, and Zs, if you, if this, then this, just like Christian, Kristin, sorry, laid out for the birds, like, there's a protocol. You, once you find out there is one, you're gonna have to time your development so that you're not doing it during the period you disturb it, and there is a way to handle mitigating. But if we don't know, if that's not explicit at the time of the approval, yeah, so, and, and also, I just, doesn't it seem like if we're starting to mitigate, we're starting to call into question the adequacy of the environmental document? If we're at, you can't pretend you're not doing mitigation by putting conditions on a project if it's intended to address an environmental impact that's not adequately addressed enough. So to me, it's kind of an all or nothing thing in a lot of ways. I could be wrong about it, but it does feel to me like, and I, I, I think, I, I agree with Commissioner Fridas that we have planned this land for this type of use, this density. It's also worth noting that there's been a large conversion of the timberland. It's not the same landscape that was there in 2006 when the project was originally being approved. That's a big disturbance to this in anticipation of future development. And, and, and so that's, to me, the most compelling reason to be at peace with the impacts that will come with the development that's been anticipated but not yet emerged. To my point earlier, I don't feel comfortable conceding on things like sewer fee, or, you know, connection fees and things, you know, that are necessary and should be borne by the people developing and the people who buy the lots. And they're usually at the time of hookup, not at the time of sale of a lot, unless the developer, unless they plan on developing the lots. But they can always pass that on, so I didn't hear anyone to that. Does anyone have similar heartache, or am I the only one?
To your point, Mr. Barnum was looking to speak. Did you wanna discuss that with him directly?
I'd be happy to hear your take.
So there were three topics. We need to go back historically to the issue of the park creation. It's been more than thirty years ago. I think it was in Southwood Unit Number Five. This was when we created an extension of Lumbe Drive, Frederick Drive, and Dixon Drive. The, the city at the time had a Parks and Rec Commission with, with, which, which with staff proposed development, as I recall, of about six acres of baseball fields with lighting, like, out at Dolbear Street. And it occupied virtually all of the flat ground on this plateau, and leaving us with the margins around it. So at that time, we had probably one hundred and eighty, one hundred and eighty-five homes, and the neighbors were upset with the idea that people would be coming from the general community out Fairway, up Lumbe Drive, and having late-night baseball games like we have over by the zoo. So the, the neighbors were opposed, and as developers, we were opposed. So the way we resolved that was we pointed out, again, this long arc of history, that the property was acquired by the Lumbe and Barnum families in the 1950s, and here we are. Now, all these, I'm sixty-eight, they acquired the property sixty-seven years ago. So the argument was made then to the Parks and Rec Commission that, look, we donated one hundred and twenty acres for golf. We built you a golf clubhouse. Isn't that equitable in the scope of three hundred and twenty acres that the city has one hundred and twenty of them? And that won the day. Fred Lumbe then said, I'll build you an acre point four tenths at the apex of Frederick and Dixon. And that was accepted, and that's how it resolved. The city did, did install a water meter, and Fred went out and, at our expense, put in all the storm drainage, and he built it at no expense to the city. The city did nothing. And so the neighbors got together and literally seeded and watered and mowed the site. It is true that the neighbors up there do not want to have a public park like a Hammond Park or a Ross Park with a lot of equipment and whatnot that would be attractive to other folks in the extended community. You can see that as elitism. I think it's just a single-family residential neighborhood wanting as much peace and quiet as they can obtain. In terms of walkability, I lived up there for twenty-two years. It's the, to my knowledge, it's the most walkable neighborhood in the city of Eureka. It's common to be out walking around those cul-de-sacs and whatnot, and encountering twenty, thirty, forty people on your morning walk, or evening walk for that matter. It may not be walkable in the sense of urban dense walkability to services, but the neighborhood is a lot of runners, joggers, and walkers because it's essentially flat. So I wanted to address that with regard to the park. The issue you had was with the, help me out.
Impact fees.
Yes, and you had one other one.
The sewer connection.
Well, we're talking about that, but you had another issue, too. I just escaped my elderly mind.
Mine have escaped my
The currency of, of the CEQA documents, the mitigated negative declaration?
Yeah, that, it was a particular issue other than that, but anyways, let's deal with the connection fees. I was once told that for developers, we're trying to build a Christmas tree that can be marketed. And there are certain essential elements that mark up that tree and adorn that tree, to make it retail available. And developers, such as our families, are cautiously trying to avoid adding more expensive ornaments to this Christmas tree, to the point that it can't be sold. Ultimately, we have to make an economic decision. When do we invest millions of dollars in the ground, literally on the come? How much are you willing to, to bet in your investment that you'll receive a reasonable return in the future? And so we've argued with the staff that, yes, we wanna pay well, double the fees from where they were, but we'd like an opportunity here to get the project built. You mentioned briefly that we could pass these fees along. Well, you can and you can't, because if your lot costs are too high, nobody's going to buy it. This is what I can build into this thought. Drive up to Lumbar Hills and drive around two hundred and twenty homes, no two homes alike. And that's intentional, because the model that we have followed is we work with the building community. Builders come to us and they have a plan. They say, I'd like to build this house on that lot. Typically, we finance that. So we take a down payment, they get their building permits, and as they get their construction financing in progress payments, we get progress payments towards full payment of the lot. We typically don't get paid in full until the property is sold. So it's not a joint venture, it's a financing scheme, but it requires we have a community of builders who are willing to build speculation housing. Now, sometimes in a good market, they'll start framing something, and someone will drive up on the street and say, can I tour the house? Yes. Well, now that you're just framing it, can I pick out the kitchen and the bathrooms and so forth? And it becomes a quasi-custom. And true, some families do work with builders and come in, and they buy a lot and build a custom home. But if, with the absorption rate of four a year, we're very cautious about adding costs in advance. I would say that these homes are likely to retail in the future for somewhere from seven hundred thousand to a million dollars at current pricing. You've seen what's happened to housing in Eureka in the last two years. I just spoke to a local developer who just sold a house this month. It's seventeen hundred and fifty square feet, it's three hundred and twenty-two dollars a square foot. I saw a house built in the nineteen forties. It's a thousand seventy-five square feet, one bedroom, on a nice landscaped lot, that sold for five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. These are ridiculously historically high prices. And they're for homes that aren't in current codes. And that just refreshed my recollection about the other issue. And that was the condition about looking at the access down to Lumbe Drive and Fairway. There was a great concern in the early two thousands by the neighbors that they would like to see a second access up to Lumbar Hills. So we engaged Mike O'Hern, local surveyor, to survey physically possibly buildable second accesses off of that plateau. He was able to design two. One would go down through the undeveloped thirty-five acres to the south of Boyle Drive. It would be a circuitous, steep road. It would have to literally run a two-lane road through the golf course to get back to Fairway Drive. The city said, we don't want a two-lane road through the golf course. The other would go down to the meadow to the north, which our family owns with, with Mr. Lumbe. About twenty-two acres down there, and that would intersect at the bottom of the hill near Martin Slough, where the new bridge was built. And the cost of that fifteen years ago was projected at two and a half million dollars. So he put that ornament on the Christmas tree, and there was no project. So speaking with staff fifteen years ago, they said, look, this is really a fire marshal issue. So go talk to the fire marshal, and we did. Fire marshal said, my concerns are for public safety. He said, I can stand everybody in Lumbar Hills on the centerline of Lumbe Drive in a wildfire. Nobody's gonna get hurt. But I would like to see the houses in this fifty-six lot addition to be sprinkled and have hardy siding. We agreed, and the map was approved. Now, the building code has since changed, and houses are required to be sprinkled. So it didn't cost us anything to be forward-thinking there. And it answered the question. It really can't be a second access. If it were a condition, there'd be no project.
I, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the condition doesn't read that way, and I'd wanna give you the benefit of hearing it, just so you can see if that jogs your memory. It says Lumbe Drive should be able to handle the additional traffic resulting from one hundred and thirty dwelling units on the adjacent forty acres. However, it's expected that However, it's expected that without some level of improvements, the intersection of Lundblade Drive with Fairway Drive cannot. And a determination analysis of impacts resulting from additional development on the adjacent 40 acres and the identification of mitigation measures would occur as part of the permit process for future development. So which adjacent 40 acres are they talking about?
I don't know what adjacent 40 acres are talking about because we have 56 lots on 19 acres.
Well, there is the parcel to the southwest that you were mentioning as one of the alternate route.
Yes, that topographically, that can't be divided into lots. It's timber parcel.
So maybe, maybe a read of that condition is that when new development should occur on adjacent lands, there may be issues with the capacity. But you're not optimistic about the potential for that emerging on that adjacent parcel that your family owns.
Well, I'm not just, I'm not just confident. It just, topi- topographically, it can't happen.
I understand, but I'm just saying that seems to be what that's speaking to. I'm trying to understand it. That's why I ask. And, uh, yeah, for a wild on fire, I, there's only one way out.
Yes.
That is not going to change with this project.
That's correct. But it was approved by the fire marshal.
One other example of something that's changed though, in the time since this map was approved.
I do want to mention that I, I did talk with the fire, um, chief and the, their, uh, the, the person there who reviews all the, um, building permits. And they were happy with the existing conditions. They said, um, they wouldn't change anything. Cause that, that did, you know, we wanted to make sure it was still up to, it was still okay in their mind.
Commissioner Freitas, you still have your hands raised. Uh, you have comments?
Oh, sure. Yeah, I feel like it may be kind of passed. The conversation has gone in different directions. But I guess I did kind of want to say, you know, I, um, I think I, I understand Commissioner Lazar's perspective on, you know, adding environmental conditions is sort of like, you know, outside of Sequo, maybe it should just be housed. And then in the MMRP, which would require opening up the Sequo document. But I mean, it does seem like there are some things in the development agreement that are, you know, will have to do additional analysis, uh, at the time of the permit. And the example of the updated inadvertent discovery protocol maybe is a good example. You know, of something where there's, you know, new treatment of a resource that hasn't changed. And, you know, I don't know, maybe, um, if legal counsel is still there, if they could, you know, provide a perspective on this as well. I'm assuming they're going to say they would find it acceptable since we've already, uh, modified the condition about inadvertent discovery. But I still feel like that might be a good way to split the difference and address, you know, some of these concerns if we can get the wording right. And, you know, in terms of Commissioner Lazar's concerns about impact fees, you know, I, I think having, having the, um, you know, fees at least updated to 2023 amounts, not 2007 amounts. I'm not sure if that was already in the plan, but I think that'd be completely appropriate. Or even just removing the frees, you know, we are, um, you know, granting a continuation here. And we do have the opportunity to, you know, ask for additional things that seem reasonable. And I think that that would be so. Anyway, I, I would like, if, if legal counsel is supportive of adding conditions, I think I would like to try and make a motion and see if we can get movement on this unless there's additional discussion.
Well, I think it's appropriate for the planning commission to advise the city council, you know, to the best of its ability. The issue that I addressed earlier was the issue of whether or not, uh, a subsequent Sequo analysis was required by the circumstances. And one of the things I will say, I think it's pretty definitive, is that the mere passage of time does not, uh, create an obligation to engage in a subsequent Sequo analysis. So, uh, yes, it's been 17 years. The question is, have changes occurred to such a magnitude that, um, a subsequent ER would be required or other Sequo analysis? As far as the addition of conditions, I think that you are the advisory body that engages with these issues and presents your thoughts to the city council. I think that staff and the developer, um, will each have their own comments when the matter arrives on the dais before the city council. But if you believe that you can fashion reasonable conditions and if they meet, you know, uh, clear concerns that you have, I think that's your, that's your right in your advisory function. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to go out on a limb here. I've been swayed by the all or nothing, um, argument of Commissioner Lazar. And, you know, while these may be downgraded to just recommendations, I'm going, I'm, I'm thinking that I would support, um, a, a motion that included providing some kind of supplemental environmental documentation, specifically in four areas to address hydrology, sorry, hydrology and water resources. Because there, it's not just the passage of time. There's been 13 acres of conversion. There's been deforestation at that site, which changes evapotranspiration rates and groundwater and stormwater runoff. To me, that's significant. And, and coupled with, uh, number two would be loss of forest resources. Three would be updates to avian surveys, bird surveys, that is. Surveys for non-aquatic amphibians. We're not in a wetland, but there's a lot of large waddy debris on the site. And then rare plant surveys. And then finally, transportation impacts per SB 743 and changes that that has wrought in our current, um, uh, mitigations around transportation.
I guess I'm just going to say I don't necessarily feel comfortable with going that direction. I think that's, that's going too far. And, um, yeah, I would be more interested in seeing a motion that, um, you know, we can see where we shake out on, you know, we heard from Mr. Barnum about the, the expensive ornament, you know? But as far as, um, doing additional environmental review, I, I'm, I'm comfortable for the most part with leaving this alone. Um, I think we've heard from council. I think the site is already seen the first wave of impacts through the conversion that's already occurred. And, um, yeah, it's planted zone for this density. So I'd, I'd feel okay with that. It's really just, do we want to make any recommendations in my mind to beef up the development agreement or obligate things that don't generate questions that we won't have answers to until a later date? So I'm okay with adding, um, like surveys and things like that and just saying, this won't be because there's an impact that's not going to address. It's just because we'll have a better understanding before the project gets implemented. You know, pre-construction survey kind of stuff, you know? I'm okay with that.
I, to the extent that I was persuaded by Commissioners Lazar, all or nothing, I came out more on the nothing side. Because, you know, I, I do think going back to Sequo is, is a bridge too far. This could get interesting. It looks like Commissioner Freitas has her hand up again.
I'm not sure it ever went down and I was going to address that with her. But if you would like to have something else to say, Commissioner Freitas?
You know, I kind of just left it up.
No, that's okay. I was, I was going to ask you about it.
But I, um, I think I'm going to try a motion, you guys, and don't feel like you have to support it if you're not, if you're not ready. And feel free to augment it if I miss something too.
Would you like staff to bring the proposed motion up? Would that be helpful?
Oh, it might be. I might not be able to see it over Zoom, but, but you could attempt it. Okay, it looks like it is going to come up.
Oh, well, that was easier than I.
Okay, I move the planning commission adopt a resolution to recommend city council approve the Lombard Hills, Southwood Unit Number Six Development Agreement with the, uh, following recommendations. One, that the conditions of approval, um, be modified to include required pre-construction surveys for nesting birds, sensitive plant species and non-aquatic amphibians, um, prior to starting of work. You know, with findings to be sent to, uh, you know, referral agencies as appropriate. Two, revisiting impact fees, uh, to set an updated fee schedule at time of council approval. Or to remove frees. And three, uh, work with the Parks Department to, uh, explore naming and signing the park, the Lombard Hills park to better, to better encourage citywide residents to utilize park amenities. And that's it.
Yes.
I would just like to clarify that, um, 2.6 in the development agreement, it says that they have to pay the sewer and water connection fees at the, um, the effective date of the approval of the development agreement. So that would be, um, in January, it would be the January, if, if it gets approved by council in January, I guess then 30 days to become effective, it'll probably be like the February 2023 numbers, not 2007. Um, the rest of the fees that they would have to pay, like their building permit fee would be, based on the current draft of the development agreement is at the time that you go in for the building permit. So everything else is at the time that it occurs. The only one that's getting locked in is the, the water and sewer, um, connection impact fees.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, I was going to point that out as well. So I think it's really just where they're going to recommend striking that, or we're going to recommend that they approve it as it is, you know, kind of the way, with the addition of the stuff, the pre-construction surveys under. Does that make sense, Dila?
Yeah, I'd be comfortable with either removing it or just recommending they consider removal of the frees. So I guess I will just move forward, with the recommendation, um, that they, I guess, do it as, as suggested. So don't remove the, or to, yeah, don't remove the frees for the connection fees.
Is everyone understanding the motion?
So it only, it would have two parts then, the pre-construction surveys and the coordination on the naming and signing for the park.
I would like to, to, um, support that motion. The, the one thing that's sort of left out for me is, is the transportation impacts and, and having, without going all the way back to Sequo, but just having a, uh, transportation engineer have a look at, you know, look, given the, the, the new legislation, um, whether the, that corners, particularly of Lundbar and Fairway Drive, um, is adequate for the expanded amount of cars that might, will be likely for this. I know that's been done in the past, but it was, but it was a long time.
Mr. Barnum, I don't think I can call on you at this time. I'm sorry.
Well, I don't want to get too, too far off of, um, you know, like trying to make a motion or having this die for lack of a second. But I thought that there was some of that evaluation with the engineering department already built into the conditions. Um, like at time of building permit approval, I thought Commissioner Lazar had already, um, you know, read that off. I'm not sure if anyone can verify that or not.
Uh, Dila, I, I'm not sure that that's the, it, it seems like the conclusion of the condition that it's condition 31 is that, um, or I guess it's condition 32, is that Lundblade Drive should be able to handle the additional traffic. So it's, it's, it's really more of a forecast into the future of a, say, a seventh phase of a subdivision. You know, that doesn't, that's not before us. So I think it's all or nothing to kind of go back to my prior theme. Kind of, we're, we're okay with the traffic analysis that we have or we're not.
Yeah, I just want to clarify the number 32 that you're reading is a finding of approval and not a condition.
Well, I'd be willing to offer a second to Commissioner Freitas's motion. So let's vote. Yeah, I think that's probably appropriate.
I'm just going to say I'm going to vote no because of the, the fees, but that's otherwise.
Because she's removed it?
Because we're, we're locking it in in a month or two and not leaving it open to whatever it is at the time the connections occur. So just, just a heads up.
Let's, let's, let's vote it, I guess.
Okay, um, Commissioner Benson?
No.
Commissioner Freitas?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Lazar?
No.
And Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Three, uh, thank you, motion carries.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
I need a nap.
Does anyone need a break here?
A break won't help me. I need a nap.
We're going to take a quick five minute break. Thank you. Are you guys ready to resume? Did I give the full five minutes? Okay. All right, well, we will resume, and it looks like we're gonna, there's no old or new business, and we'll move to the Directors, Reports, and Communications.
Great, that's me, I will bring up my PowerPoint. Okay, this is the fourth in a series of review sessions. Planning Commission is slowly reviewing a first draft of the Coastal Land Use Plan update. So, to recap, our local coastal program, or LCP for short, is the standard of review for coastal development permits in the coastal zone. It has a land use plan part, which is part of our general plan, and an implementation part, which is part of our municipal code. And right now, we're trying to update the, comprehensively update the LUP, which hasn't been comprehensively updated since 1997. And after we finish working on this, we'll start working on the IP, comprehensive update. So we're proposing that this new LUP become a coastal element of our 2040 general plan and duplicate relevant portions of other 2040 general plan elements, as well as include additional policies and maps necessary to fully carry out the California Coastal Act. It, we're proposing it be organized into six chapters, and tonight we're looking at the Land Use and Development Chapter, as well as some proposed reclassification of land currently designated for coastal-dependent industrial use. So some things to keep in mind are that the coastal element will only apply in the coastal zone. And so if there's policies that are wanted to be added to the general plan to apply citywide, then this would not be the place to add them. Also, our general plan is supposed, is intended to include broad policies that are flexible enough for them to remain relevant for a 20-year planning horizon, where we would want to put the more detailed implementation measures in the IP. Also, it must conform with the Coastal Act, which we don't have full discretion on all of the policy language for this reason. So, some key Coastal Act parameters to understand for this chapter, the LUP by definition must indicate the kinds, locations, and intensity of land uses in the coastal zone. That's why we need to include our land use map, and our land use designations, and the floor area ratios, and, you know, units per acre density, because that's, the LUP needs to include that. Also, land use decisions in the coastal zone need to protect coastal resources, ensure adequate services, minimize risk to hazards, and not displace current or future priority uses. So some of the big, a lot of, when the 2040 general plan was adopted, we adopted land use designations for the coastal zone. And the modifications being proposed in this new draft are mostly to address these things. And what a priority use is, is in the Coastal Act, there's policies that prioritize certain uses over general, commercial, general, industrial, and residential development. And so these are the coastal-dependent uses, coastal-related uses, agriculture, visitor-serving commercial, especially lower cost, and natural resources, and public access, and recreation. So this draft chapter has seven parts. I'm not gonna go over every provision with you, I'm just gonna hit the highlights. So it starts with a section on community places, which mirrors, oh, somebody's trying to get in. Oh, no, Dila was... Okay, yeah. Oops, they're saying they can't hear us. Oh, no. This is, yeah. Okay. I probably... Yes, I'm so sorry, people that are on Zoom. Okay. Sorry, our admin had to go homesick today, and I'm just here by myself doing this. Okay. So I'm just about to start explaining the sections of this draft chapter. So the first section is on community places, and these are distinct recognizable districts, areas, areas, and corridors in the city. There's 16 in the coastal zone. Each one, the existing conditions are described, as well as a vision for their future over the planning period through 2040. And as compared to what's adopted in the 2040 general plan, the modifications here, staff felt were necessary to more clearly prioritize priority uses and to address sea level rise. So... Why aren't you... Okay. So, by 2040, based on the OPC Best Available Science, we're anticipating somewhere between 1.1 and 1.6 feet of sea level rise. So if you look at a king tide plus 1.6 feet of sea level rise, assuming failure of any existing shoreline structures, there are certain areas in the city that are vulnerable within this planning period, and are actually already vulnerable. Brainerd, Jacobs Avenue, and this West Side area that was built on fill in the late 1800s. So now the vision statements for those community places talk about adapting to sea level rise. And then, if you look at what might occur by 2100, we're looking at 3 to 7.6 feet of sea level rise. So this map shows king tide plus 6.6 feet of sea level rise. There are certain areas of the coastal zone, few and far between, but there are some that aren't even anticipated to be vulnerable by 2100. The east side of Old Town, the Library District, the Bridge District, and the west side of the North Gateway, and Myrtle Avenue, areas that are zoned for neighborhood commercials. So those are areas where the Coastal Commission would likely be comfortable in us talking about increasing density, because there's, it minimizes risk to hazard. So the second section is the Coastal Land Use Designation section. And some of the changes from our current certified and from the adopted 2040 general plan, overall, it clarifies public access and access support facilities are permitted everywhere, if they're consistent with the LUP, other LUP policies. Residential land use designations have been updated to make them consistent with SB9, the state residential, and the R1, I mean, the low-density residential. And then for commercial office and mixed uses, Old Town Commercial currently, it prioritizes and only principally allows uses that cater to tourists, and also coastal-dependent and coastal recreation, because it's combined with the Bayfront District. So this is proposing to separate it out, and instead of focusing on catering to tourists, it's focused on limiting ground-floor, street-facing uses based on whether those uses contribute to a pedestrian-friendly environment. So generate foot traffic, have interesting window displays, things like that. Another change is, yeah, the Bayfront Commercial is its own designation, and the ground floor will be focused on water-oriented and visitor-serving commercial and recreational uses and leisure activities. And no residential would be allowed on the ground floor to address sea level rise. Library District, in the current LUP and in the 2040 general plan, it's just another professional office district. But based on outreach with the waterfront-specific plan, it does seem unique from other office districts, in that we want it to be more of a complete community, and not just a place people come to go to the office. And it's a cultural district, part of the cultural district. So proposing a new land use designation specific to the Library District. Commercial Highway East, currently and in the 2040, adopted 2040 general plan, it's just another general commercial district here. Commercial Highway East would instead be more limiting about what is allowed here to address sea level rise vulnerability. So for instance, in general commercial, you can have residential permitted, and here residential would not be allowed. Also, when the, when the Betty Chin Community Housing Project occurred, the site just north of the city's wastewater treatment plant, a new land use designation was created called Mixed Use Limited, because the Coastal Commission was not comfortable certifying that property for general commercial, which was what the city requested at the time. And so Mixed Use Limited is supposed to be intended for constrained sites, and it allows limited intensity, limited-term residential, commercial, and public facilities uses. So staff is currently proposing that this whole area inland of Hillficker become Mixed Use Limited. There's the fire training station there, there's an existing residence. Next month, the Public Works is going to be coming to city council with their, they've been doing a sea level rise adaptation plan for their CIP, and you know, there's a potential to retreat Hillficker in the future and retreat to the railroad, which is inland of these properties. Industrial uses change. Currently, the coastal-dependent industrial district, you know, coastal-dependent industry is principally permitted, and that's, to be coastal-dependent, you have to necessarily need a site on the bay to be able to function at all. And then conditional uses are limited to some coastal-related industrial uses, and we're currently proposing to add more of those coastal-related industrial uses. So for instance, timber products manufacturing is currently not allowed on CDI land. So that would be something we'd want to add. Also coastal-dependent civic, commercial, and recreational uses. So these would be not industrial, but they would be, they would need, you know, access to the bay to be able to function at all. So like, I don't know if a maritime museum necessarily does, but marine research, or boat equipment rental, things like that, that are not coastal-dependent industrial, but they're coastal-dependent. Also, there's the idea of interim uses, which would allow non-coastal-dependent uses for a limited period of time, modeled after the counties adopted interim use provisions on their CDI lands. Secondary uses, which are uses that would be supplemental to an active CDI use. It's similar to like in agricultural districts. The commission will allow, you know, limited tourism, agricultural tourism, like farm tours as a supplemental secondary use on an active ag site, similar to that, and then second-floor offices. And then we're also proposing a new CDI light designation that is intended for bayfront parcels that are less suitable for CDI, so parcels that don't have access to a deep-water channel that would conditionally allow coastal-related uses and non-coastal-dependent light industrial uses. And I'll get to where we're proposing that, but it's just two parcels at this point. So in public quasi-public use, the 2040 general plan just has one general land use designation for this, so we're proposing to add back in the public facilities Marina land use designation, which is a designation for Woodley Island that prioritizes commercial fishing industry. And the Bayfront Recreation is a new idea, which is like general, public quasi-public, but it's more focused on coastal recreation, and just how we use our waterfront parcels in the, through 2040, with the idea that we might need to retreat in the future, in the long term. And then in open space, changes remain to the agricultural land use designation to make it more protective of agricultural uses than the 2040 general plan, but it's more flexible than the currently certified LUP. All right, third section, community form and character. The Coastal Act calls for development to be located within contiguous with and in close proximity to existing developed areas, and to minimize energy consumption and vehicle miles traveled. So this section tries to clarify to the Coastal Commission that any development in Eureka, in the context of rural Humboldt County, does get things closer, close to existing development, and is good for the environment, because it, you know, the other option is sprawl outside of city limits. So some policies that have been added to this section that aren't in the current 2040 general plan is one talking about allowances for neighborhood markets. The Coastal Commission, in the past, has been really focused on making sure everything is catering to tourists, but we're arguing that, you know, even, in, for instance, in the Old Town area, you know, a neighborhood market would benefit tourists and residents, and make it just more walkable. There's a policy on reducing barriers to housing in the implementation plan, setting ourselves up for approval of our implementation plan changes. A policy about affordable housing density bonuses, and a non-conforming structures policy, and a land division policy. And I'm pretty sure if we didn't include policies on land division or non-conforming structures, they would be added by suggested modifications. So, you know, the ones that are being recommended are, you know, I think, up to snuff with what the Coastal Commission wants, but doesn't, you know, go overboard in, in what we're trying to achieve. So for instance, the non-conforming structure policy follows the Coastal Commission's, how they interpret redevelopment and repair and maintenance, but its focus on non-conformities related to culture, to resource protection standards, and not on other standards. Okay, fourth section is about the coastal core area. And really, the coastal core area, there's policies throughout the other chapters that we've reviewed so far. So this is just basically the leftover policies not covered elsewhere that are relevant to coastal development permitting. So we left out policies about murals and things that wouldn't be something that needed a coastal development permit, that would in turn, this document is, you know, is a standard of review for coastal development permitting. So that's where we're trying to focus on things that would be implicated by that. The fifth section is about coastal-dependent development. And other than the first policy, it's really focused on coastal-dependent industry. And there, the, there isn't any policies on commercial fishing in there, because it's covered in the public access and recreation chapter, I mean, specifically on commercial fishing. LUD 3.2 through 3.8, those proposed policies promote coastal-dependent industry, while 3.9 through 3.11 try to address... 3.9 through 3.11 try to address under utilization of CDI lands. 3.9 calls for allowing certain conditional interim uses that aren't CDI to avoid deferred maintenance on CDI lands. 3.10 calls for allowing compatible secondary uses on active CDI sites and 311 talks about when, how to allow a reclassification of CDI land. Six agriculture and other priority use under the Coastal Act. This section, you know, we don't have that much agricultural land in the city and the big parcel up in the Northeast, most of that is a fish and wildlife, wildlife preserve. So it's not used for ag. Nevertheless, because we have a little bit of ag land, we need all these ag policies. And one thing to call out is the current LUP prohibits any subdivision of agricultural land, well as this draft includes a policy that would allow subdivision of agricultural land if certain criteria were met. Public Works is the last section. And it covers the Coastal Act topics of concern, which are ensuring adequate services for new development, ensuring prioritization of limited services and prohibiting service extensions which induce growth inconsistent with the LUP. And stormwater and transportation are covered in more detail in the other, the public access and rec chapter and the land use or land and aquatic resources chapter. And we're also anticipating adding policies about public work, works adaptation to climate change in the coastal hazards chapter, which will hopefully come to you next month. And so for the CDI land inventory and reclassifications, there's currently 62 APNs totaling 206 acres of CDI land in the city, 115 acres of that is land, the rest is water. They've been grouped into 24 sites and five subareas for analysis. Subarea one is the fishing industrial district and the Eureka Marina. And the proposal is to keep one through six as CDI, but reclassify the marina to public quasi-public. Marinas are principally permitted in public quasi-public, whereas the stuff out there, most of it requires a conditional use permit in CDI. And that was the justification for that one. This is consistent with what the adopted 2040 general plan proposes. The second subarea two, bayfront commercial district. The proposal is to use that CDI light designation on the southernmost parcel, which is the Simpson site. There's actually a shallow log pond between the site and deeper water, which would make it hard to develop for CDI. Also, the APN that's west of the log pond is actually part of the parcel number, the site 12 to the north owned with a different property owner. And then Eureka Forest Products, the site number 12, they recently did a lot line adjustment so that the area that we're proposing to reclassify general industrial is its own parcel. It's not two wonky parcels like it's shown there. And that's the capped portion of the site. And the other one to the far north that we're proposing to reclassify as bayfront industrial, it's between, Marina Way is between it and the water. It's part of the larger Schneider owned parcel. There was a request from the landowner to redesignate the whole site, general industrial. And I think the most likely to get any sort of rezone would be the northernmost parcel. And I think reclassifying it to something that's still somewhat prioritizes CDI would be more likely to get approved than general industrial. Cause when reclassifying the first thing, the Coastal Commission will ask is after determining that it's a less suitable site for CDI, they'll want to know why it's not being redesignated into another priority use designation. This is different than the 20, the adopted 2040 general plan shows all of 10 as general Subarea, oh, this is just showing how large these parcels are. So this is the Simpson site, the southernmost one, like the whole fishing industry district fits into that one site. It's pretty large and underutilized. CDI land, okay, subarea three, this is the shoreline south of the Del Nord Street Pier. And the proposal is to redesignate most of it as bayfront recreation, except for the middle area that's mostly water to make it natural resources consistent with the Palco Marsh designation to the east. Chevron is its own subarea, proposed to stay CDI. And then south of Chevron, there's this whole area where staff is proposing a number of non-CDI designations. And I'm happy to give justifications for that if there's questions. And that's the extent of my presentation.
Thank you. You guys have questions?
Yeah, yeah. I think Steve and I have a lot, a lot. We had to do a lot of reading this time. There's a lot to go over and thank you for, for giving us a summary of the whole thing. Would you like us to start with CDI and work our way backwards? I know there's some folks here tonight who might want to give public comment on that. Or do you want to start at the beginning?
I don't think there is public comment.
Oh, there isn't?
You can do public comment if you wish to. There's no public hearing that was noticed, but if.
Are there people here that are looking to speak? Okay. Step on up. Just state your name and city residents, please.
Good evening, commissioners and staff. My name is Ken Bates. I live in the city of Eureka. I am, I'm here representing Humboldt Fisherman's Marketing Association. I'm going to try to cover a lot of ground really fast here. Humboldt Fisherman's Marketing Association was incorporated in 1955. In 1982, I started representing the association in land use issues and zoning and planning within the city of Eureka. We had numerous battles over the years. I was involved in the 1997 update at that time. And when we were working with the city and with a planning commission, the entire waterfront was waterfront commercial. It was the Wild West, you know, a hair salon could shut down the fish plant. So we were able to get CDI zoning that would extend it from the center of C Street down and included the old, the Pope Basin. And, and at that point, we were satisfied that we had protective zoning for the fishing fleet in the scrap that was left. Back in 2012, I was invited by Robert Wall, you know, it's a planning commissioner planner here at the time, to come up and to work with the city staff to see what kind of things that we would, the fishermen's associations would like to see. And at that time, our, our efforts were focused on Woodley Island Marina during that time. And so we worked for about a year, we produced this document and these are asks for cleaning up the zoning, the permit language at Woodley Island Marina. During the process that we were involved in this, Mr. Wall left and we had a change in planners and we were, at that point, we were trying to work with Rob Homland. We had approached this planning commission at the time, you know, working with the, the planning commission and explaining the changes that we would like to see to protect the fishing fleet's use of Woodley Island. Woodley Island Marina is the first marina ever built in California to relocate an entire fishing fleet. And that was because of an economic development plan in 1968 by the city of Eureka. And so we had the blessing of the planning commission. They recommended that, that we, that the planning commission recommended that Mr. Homland take their recommendations out of this document and bring them to the city council. And at the, that particular meeting, the chair of the planning commission basically said to Mr. Homland, can you do that? He said, I'll see. And so for five years, I went in front of the commission, the council again and again and again and again, asking that our input to the city's general plan, you know, be included in the process. And we never got any traction. We switched our, we, should I quit? Okay. We switched our focus to the Coastal Commission and started working with Coastal Commission staff. Bob Merrill and I actually became pretty good friends over all this. And then we ended up leaving a letter with the Coastal Commission that basically requested that the Coastal Commission deny state certification for the city's coastal plan program, the LUP? Yeah. And so that's, that's where we got. In the meantime, one of the things that we discovered was that, that the planning, the planning staff at that time under Mr. Homland had slipped in a bunch of language in the CDI description for the fishing, fishing industry district, which is that small little scrap. And one of the things that was done is that the language was, was put in so that there could be interim uses and, you know, in the, in those areas so that those areas would, wouldn't be vacant. Our association has had a long history of advocating for, for infrastructure in, on those areas. It took us 18 years to finally get to work with the city. We applied for all the grants to build Fisherman's Terminal. And that was, that was to reestablish that area as fishing infrastructure, but also to remove urban blight and to open that up for public, public access. The Coastal Conservancy was part of the funding to put the trails in and all that stuff. But what we ended up with in, in essentially the update that we were not able to have much effect in is we ended up with interim uses in that small area. And we had repeatedly asked, what is an interim use? You know, and in a letter that I wrote to, to your organization here, there two ago, is an interim use, is it a tent on a parking lot? Or is an interim use a two-story building with a restaurant and shops? And, and so for the fishing fleet, and not just this fishing fleet here, but every fishing fleet in the world, the, the things that start to gentrify a working waterfront is language like that. Now, it is certainly not your responsibility that that language has occurred in these planning documents, but we would like to bring this to your attention because fishermen's organizations view this as the slippery slope. And so I completely understand that the city is under great constraints by excess CDI zoning around the corner. This was an industrial site in the 18 and 1900s. This place was completely covered with sawmills and stuff. And we have all these defunct industrial sites that we're still trying to deal with. But the scrap that the fishing industry is, is working on, you know, we would like to not have to worry about the fact that when they're, when we continue to try to get new cold storage built here, that they're going to put a restaurant there. And I don't see as a community that we go and we ask George Smidbauer to put a restaurant in his sawmill. We certainly wouldn't allow, you know, the company that crushes cars to sit up next to the hospital. And this is going to sound stupid, but I'm a zoning purist. I have been converted over years and years and years of dealing with these problems again and again and again. And I have consistently found that when I come before folks like yourself, you know, and work with planners that have the wide view, everybody seems to get that. And the reason that the waterfront looks the way it looks today was because of a failed plan in 1968 to convert the fishing industry waterfront into shops and restaurants and hotels. And we're still dealing with that legacy. My goal tonight is to bring it to your attention that some of the language that is in, is in this is unclear, how fishermen and fishing, the fishing industry and the community at large will survive this stuff. You know, it's a small area and, and we're trying to preserve it. Fishing is still a great way of life. I'm still doing, I, that's my deal. That's what I do. And so I'm not going to bring any specific suggestions to you tonight, but I did, I did submit a letter, you know, and we're continuing to try to work on the zoning at Woodley Island. And I've been working with Larry Otker, a new association that's been formed here recently, the California Fisherman's Resiliency Association to deal with the wind power projects. Our goal is to promote resiliency in fishing communities. And one of the things that we're looking at is to try to see if we can go to the Coastal Conservancy and get money to, for those, for the Harbor District, you know, to increase the gear storage over there, you know, and do things like that that are proactive. So thank you for your time tonight. If you get where you're really bored, you can't think of anything else to do, I'd love to come and talk to you some more about the waterfront at a different time. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a great history lesson.
So because we're dealing with a high level land use plan, not the implementation plan, you were alluding earlier to with respect to interim uses, and I think the gentleman we just heard from, I enjoy hearing this, just with regard to like following the model possibly or somewhat that the county did with their recent interim use provisions. And that model, as I understand it, is, is a use that's only allowed with a use permit. It's a use that can only have a tenure of upwards of 10 years maximum before it has to be revisited. And, and it can't make, if it's dealing with existing infrastructure, it can't do things that would commit that infrastructure or lose the things about it that are valuable for truly dependent industrial uses. Is that what you have in mind, something along that line when we get to that stage?
Correct. I don't think anything else would get certified by the Coastal Commission, other than detailed performance standards about how specifically those interim uses aren't going to get in the way of existing or future CDI use.
Since we're talking about CDI, I guess we're starting at the end and working towards the beginning. So I want to give some comments on that. And thank you, Kristin, very much for just making clear what coastal dependent uses are because there's such a wide variety of things can fit into that. But I, but I also share a little bit of concern about interim uses and secondary uses as Ken Bates from the Humboldt Fisherman's Marketing Association expressed to us tonight, you know, as well, that there's just some, some concern about that language, you know, being a slippery slope and that, you know, secondary compatible uses becoming possibly permanent. You know, how long, how long is an interim use? I mean, I think there is some lack of clarity in, in that, in that language. And, and I agree, one of the things I value about Humboldt's waterfront and, and I'm sorry, Eureka's waterfront is that it is a working waterfront and it's not overly gentrified. And, and so I want to, you know, make sure that, that we keep supporting the fishing industry wherever possible. One question that came from that letter was, that I would like a little bit of explanation on is what is the right to fish deed restriction? Could you help us understand that a little bit? I think it was LUP 310.
Yeah, I was, I had a conversation with city attorney Black about this because I'm not a hundred percent sure how it works, but it's like a right to farm notice that you have to, you know, where I live, I had to sign one to say that I would be okay. You know, I wouldn't take any nuisance claims out on the agricultural land that was next to me for their noise or smells or anything like that. So something of that nature to ensure that, you know, nobody could just, a non-fishing use could come in and then make claims that the vibrations or smells or noise are a nuisance and kick the, the fishing, you know, uses out. Doesn't address the, you know, land value issue of allowing other uses, but it could address the nuisance issue.
Thank you. That helps a lot, Principal Planner Kenyon. You also mentioned that there's going to be reclassification or proposed reclassification of the marina in particular from CDI to, did you say mixed use? Because it would be principally permitted?
Public quasi-public.
Thank you. Public quasi-public. BQP, there's a lot of acronyms here.
Yeah.
And, and that's because it would be principally permitted. So it's trying to keep roadblocks out of the way of, of developing the waterfront. Is there, is, is that what it's really for? So not having to go through getting a coastal use permit from the Coastal Commission for every little thing you want to do. for every little thing you want to do, it just streamlines things? But is there also protection lost by not going through the?
Yeah, I mean technically in public quasi-public, you know, it allows for any sort of public facility. So you could technically build a corp yard or a golf course on a parcel. That's public quasi-public. Whereas if it's CDI, you can't do any of that.
Right, so this is the slippery slope that the Fishermen's Association mentioned. So will projects, will PQP projects come to us that are principally permitted? They won't, will they?
Yes, they will. If that parcel, you know, if there's a new, if there's something that constitutes development, it's not, and it's within a hundred feet of wetlands, you know, it's not only needs a CDP, but it's appealable to the Coastal Commission. So that site in particular, I think, anything you would want to do there would probably need a coastal development permit if you're adding on to an existing building. But if you're changing the density or intensity of use there, I think you would need a coastal development permit. And any, like, public works projects, they don't get the same exemption as improvements to other types of existing structures. And so since that's a city-owned site, I don't see it. I don't see things out there getting many exemptions.
Yeah, go ahead, I'll save, I just have some comments later on.
Yeah, just what we're talking about, that's, I mean, most of that site's underwater, right? I mean, it's the marina.
Right, I mean, there's the bathroom and the fish cleanout.
There's a public boat launch, you know.
Yeah.
But I can't imagine redevelopment being very high potential for that site in particular. It's largely occupied with it. And that is the site of the former marina before it was redone in the fifties or something. It went a different, it was more linear, it was only one slip. But I mean, it's been a marina for sixty-plus years at least.
Yeah, the city doesn't currently have any plans to do anything out there other than public marina boating stuff, boating support facilities.
All right, these are just some comments I have for you, Principal Planner Kenyon, mostly involving the background sections.
Sure.
Start with coastal dependent development, that was page twenty-four. It says, "The city of Eureka is separated," is the word used, "from the Pacific Ocean by Humboldt Bay and Samoa Peninsula." And I just want to make a comment on that. It's, you know, while I understand why you use the word separated, you know, from an oceanography and marine biology point of view, we're not separated at all. I might have you consider revising that to say, "The city of Eureka is intimately connected to the riverine, estuarine, and marine environments." You know, anything but separation. "The city's centrally staged near the mouth of Humboldt Bay, which is California's second-largest estuarine system. Eureka is bound on two sides by tidal estuaries, including Eureka Slough and Ryan Slough to the northeast, Swain Slough and Martin Slough to the southeast. And Eureka is also bisected from the northeast by smaller sloughs, including Cooper Gulch, McFarland Slough, and Third Slough. I know that's a mouthful and I can send this stuff to you if you're interested." But it just, it struck me that the city of Eureka is separated from the Pacific Ocean just does not seem, I get the gist of it, but I think, especially looking at your sea level rise maps, we're anything but separated from the Pacific Ocean. It just seems odd to me.
Yeah, that was written with the Coastal Commissioners from out of the area in mind to be like, hey, heads up, we're not on the ocean technically.
I see, right.
But I totally get that, it's not correct that we are intimately connected to the ocean. So I will totally get rid of that.
And then the other one is page twenty-seven agriculture, kind of the background too. You know, the background describes dyked former tidelands that are used primarily for dairy and beef grazing. And so that's sort of the all-in-all of our agriculture is sort of put into what, into our grazing lands that are, you know, easy to see from satellite photos, et cetera. But it doesn't include forestry as a dominant form of agriculture. You know, both within the city's greenways and gulches in the non-industrial timberlands and the industrial timberlands that surround us to the northeast and the south. So it just strikes me that agriculture is separate from forestry when the feds consider it the same.
It isn't. This would be the section where we would have policies on timber harvesting and things like that. But there are no timberlands in the city's coastal zone. And that's the one sentence we put in there. But we could add information about how there is extensive forest land in the city outside of the coastal zone.
Okay, yeah, maybe it's not necessary. Maybe I'm looking at too big of a slice of our geography and not zoning in specifically on the coast, although there is some riparian land and Sika spruce, you know, some more salt-tolerant forests grading into the prairie, the coastal mat prairie. I would also just say that, and I don't know how much of this is in the coastal zone, but a small but not insignificant component of our agriculture is also shown through, you know, community vegetable gardens, edible landscapes, aquaculture home gardens, cannabis grows, farmers' markets. It just seems like agriculture was just defined so narrowly. And in general, agriculture is narrowly defined as properties that are registered with the Williamson Act. So it's really large farms or dairies or cattle ranches. And so of course, we're not going to get many hits in the city of Eureka, but it doesn't mean we don't do agriculture here and that people aren't making a living off of it. You know, same thing with forest areas are defined by areas that have THPs. You know, I have three and a half acres of forest on my property in Eureka that's managed for timber. You know, but I fall out, I'm not, it's still zoned as residential. And so it just seems like that large-scale metric misses kind of a patchwork of agricultural and forestry activities that happen within our city limits by just making it, if it's Williamson Act or there's a THP, then it is. But if it's not that, either of those, then it's not those activities. And I know you're looking at a broad scale with zoning, but it just seems, you know, if we're describing the city, it seems we're being a little bit remiss and not considering forest resources as a big part of the city in ag. Then one last, and then I promise I'll stop, stop already. Public Works background, this is page thirty. And it includes wastewater and solid waste. And you mentioned Pacific Gas and Electric Plant, you know, meaning the Humboldt Bay Generating Station. But what's interesting to me is it doesn't mention the ISFAC, right? So that's the sixty-seven tons of spent nuclear fuel rods that are stored since nineteen eighty within two miles of Eureka. And I just think the city of Eureka, you know, might want to note that in our general plan that, you know, it's one of the clearest risks to our cities and to all of our coastal dependent uses. And, you know, it's right in line with tsunami, right in line with liquefaction. And we've had thirteen hundred feet of erosion at Booner Point, you know, already. So I would just think that it might, you might consider an inclusion of it into a subsection of the plan. And where we'd go forward as a city is to maybe include as a goal some kind of collaboration with Nuclear Regulatory Commission, California Public Utilities Commission, to look for a storage unit that's not directly threatened by sea level rise, tsunami, or liquefaction. Just, you know, it's just one of those things that just because it's out of sight doesn't mean it should be out of our minds. We can't forget that it's still there and that we're at risk because of it. And I'm not sure where to put that, Kristin, but it just seems like it's something we're saying some point in the general plan as opposed to just forgetting about it.
In the coastal hazard chapter, we're going to have a section on hazardous materials. So we can definitely add that to the background of that. And then in terms of a policy about it, maybe that goes in the broader general plan because it's not affecting development in the city, but it's something that maybe we want a policy about collaborating with others to address it. And maybe that goes in a different part of the twenty forty general plan to think about it.
I wish my comments and questions were anywhere near that area you died. But when I thought before about reclassifying CDI property, sort of like a both-and, that you want to keep the gems that are really needed and that we reasonably expect to use and reclassify quite a bit else. Do you think that this approach is doing those two things?
It depends on who you talk to. But that was the strategy, was to think through which sites are most appropriate for CDI and keep those designated CDI.
I mean, clearly it's thoughtful, what you put forward. You know, it's based on the specific lots and features, so I very much appreciate that. One of the comments, actually, I don't know that this came from you. Tom Wheeler of Epic probably emailed all of us. I may have CC'd staff, it was done on a BCC kind of thing, but that came through today. And his issue was, is there a way to try to dissuade the use of fossil fuels, the growth of fossil fuels? And let's put Chevron aside, we, you know, wouldn't be practical to try to run them out of town. But what, you know, is there a way legally that we could write this in a way that it makes a coal train less likely? That it makes conversion from fossil fuels more likely for our city?
The Coastal Act surprisingly has a lot of protection of energy development. And they have written opposition comments to, you know, increased, any sort of increased leases in the water for oil, you know, and things like that. But they recommend that cities and counties adopt, you know, resolutions outside of the LCP with that kind of, you know, we won't banning sort of support facilities because if we put it in the LUP or the LCP, they might have to mod it to allow it because of those Coastal Act language that basically says you have to make room for it if you, if X, Y, and Z. I don't know if I'm articulating that correctly, but that's typically their guidance is to do it outside. And I think we have, I think we have adopted, but I can look into that.
Okay, so that would also be, I replied to Tom and he replied back to me. And he was fairly pessimistic about the ability to write it in here, but he asked us to think about it. I think that is worthwhile.
I will research that further.
Okay. And then just, I'm half-serious and half-ironic with this. One of the things that was in your presentation, and I think this comes from state legislation, is that you can't displace future priority uses? And just how would one know that one was doing that?
So for instance, the only way we're getting these CDI reclassifications approved by the Coastal Commission is that the county did this big market study in twenty eighteen that looked not just at existing CDI uses, but potential future ones and how much land they would need and how much additional CDI we could potentially need for wind energy and things like that. So, you know, there was one done in maybe two thousand and three or two thousand and six and it thought about future uses. And of course, at that point, it was like, oh, maybe we could lug water down south or aggregates, but, you know, wind energy wasn't on the table at the time. So, you know, any endeavor into thinking about the future is going to be flawed, but they require us to think about what could potentially be needed.
All right, I appreciate it.
Does Commissioner Freitas maybe want to come off mute if she has something to add?
Thank you, Chair. I don't think that I do. I feel like it's headed in the right direction. I definitely trust Principal Planner Kenyon to, you know, guide this with her experience, both of the city and, you know, with state coastal policy. I think we're headed in a good direction. And I guess I would also, you know, just echo that I did receive an email from Epic with the same request to think of ways to potentially limit uses that were oil, you know, oil-related, oil-dependent. And I would, yeah, be supportive of more analysis of ways that we could do that, even if it was outside of the LCP. But otherwise, I don't have anything else at the moment, thank you.
I guess I'll just say, I also, in the spirit of ex parte, received probably the same email from Tom. I didn't respond, but I would agree with the characterization of the requests. And I think if we are of interest of pursuing that, that couldn't it be possible that that would be done through some sort of resolution, separate ordinance, non-land use related that comes in the wake of certification by the Coastal Commission, but's built at the same time, so nothing, the process has already been vetted or it goes forward and gets activated after the plan is adopted and certified, something like that.
Yes, and I think I know of some examples, so I'm going to look into that.
I guess I don't know if this is the right place for it, but Hilficker seems like a great place for a boat launch. And that might be in the recreation section of the plan or something, but.
There is a boat launch.
And I guess what I'm thinking is on the Hickshary Trail, like, there's like a section at the mouth of the Elk River where, I won't say I launched a boat there, but you could launch a boat there if you were so inclined. But there is no formal launch, and that seems to me like a good spot.
There is a formal launch, it's called a primitive boat launch, which means you have to lug your boat across the sand. And I'm pretty sure that was part of the negotiations for the twenty-eleven Hickshary Trail CDP that it wasn't a constructed boat launch because of the sand. Yeah, but I will ask our city manager because he'll remember what the deal was there. But yes, and we are getting a new kayak launch at the Elk River Estuary Enhancement Site, which is exciting. Or it's in, you know, it's just not open yet. But yeah, more boat launches. I know city manager has mentioned a potential boat launch at parcel four, you know, just north of Chevron. That would also be a place that would take a while to lug your boat to. You're talking about non-motorized boat launches, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, more non-motorized boat launches. I think we added a policy based on your recommendation to the public access and rec. chapter on that.
I guess I'd ask a question, I'd be interested in Mr. Bates's opinion of Jack's Seafood because.
Oh, gosh.
And I just want to say, I'm interested, and it was okay, but just because Jack's Seafood, and correct me if I'm wrong, is located pretty much right smack on top of where Lazio's.
Absolutely.
And Lazio's, to me, is an example of a business that's a retail, but also bought things straight off the dock. And there was a, it, when you're talking about zoning purism, I would say that that kind of messes with that model. And couldn't that be, you know, if operated in a similar fashion, given its location and whole advantage, a win-win?
I would love to address your question. So when Humboldt Fishermen's Marketing Association started to look into the, to try to go ahead and acquire the property of the old Tom Lazio Fish Company, at that time, when we started jumping through hoops that we really didn't understand, one of the things that we kept running into, because we had already asked for CDI zoning in that area, was the fact that we had to be careful, you know, to avoid a non-conforming use. When we finally teamed up with David Tyson and Dave McGinty from the city, you know, and we co-applied for all the monies, you know, our proposal for that particular site included you know, our proposal for that particular site included a essentially an ancillary use, and the ancillary use was a little fish market that basically was hooked up to the rest of the fish unloading and fish processing there. And our agreement, in our contractual agreement with with the EDA office up in Portland, is that that was going to be a fish market. And so because it was a fish market and not a restaurant, that filled the bill for what was supposed to go on. The facility got, got built. The fish market portion of it was left unfinished. And so the city started to look around for a tenant. A tenant showed up that had actually had fish market experience. They negotiated with the city for, I think, about a year and a half. The guy finally pulled his hair out and walked off and just left the deal. And so what ended up happening at that time is that um, Mr. Holman found our, somebody that would put a restaurant in. The restaurant, actually, they had to break through the wall into the processing area and build into the fish plant to put the restaurant in. We've always contended that that was a non-conforming use, and as far as the Fisherman's Association was concerned, it put us in breach of contract with EDA. So that's my answer. We don't object to restaurants. We don't object to fish markets, but part of the problem, again, is that, you know, in, 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 under the old waterfront commercial zoning, you know, a restaurant can shut down a fish plant. I mean, that's the rules, and we get it. At one point years ago, the city got two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of outer continental shelf money from the state, and they used that to build a parking lot where the Vista del Mar is. Fishermen were scratching their heads, why is this parking lot going in? Nobody could understand it. And that was all waterfront commercial zoning, and the next thing that we found out was the city had applied for a permit to build a restaurant upstairs above England Marine in that particular, particular portion of the EDA building that had never been completed, because they can never find a water-dependent tenant for the upstairs. We opposed the restaurant at the time, and the reason we opposed the restaurant at the time is that um, Tom Lazio Fish Company, which had moved down there, had a fish pump that when they turned the thing on, the entire building shook. It was this huge monster, you know, we, we would never run fish through that kind of thing again, ever, but it was, it was such a public nuisance that people complained about it at night when they were unloading drag boats. And we knew that if the restaurant went in there, that that would shut that down. We actually came to the city and tried to apply for a variance on behalf of the city of Eureka, so that they could put the restaurant in, but we're not sophisticated. And we didn't understand that you could actually put something on a deed or in an agreement that says, hey, if the guy turns the rest, the fish pump on, you know, and the plates are shaking, you can't ha- have him turn it off. So again, this gets back to zoning purism, and it's probably not practical in the real world, but because we had worked to put that facility in, you know, our goal was to have a fish market, and that does two things. It sells fish, but the more important thing is that brings people down to the waterfront. Now, a restaurant does the same thing. You know, we just wish that there was a fish case in there. So that was a long answer, but thank you.
Actually, Mr. Bates, I do want to re-ask part of his question is, would, what would Lazio's be? Well, I mean, if, if, as a zoning purist, would you have allowed the old Lazio's in, in the zoning you're talking about?
Yeah, so interestingly enough, is that i- is that the, both Lazio's and also, and also the Eureka Seafood Grotto, both of those restaurants had fish cases in them, and both of those restaurants were owned by big fish companies at the time. There's much bigger fish companies now. That model got transferred over to Woodley Island Marina. In the language, in the zoning, in the zoning, in the permitting for Woodley Island, and it's, it says in that particulars, in that zone for public facilities marina, that they allow for um, I'm trying to think of the exact words. This is a recall thing. It basically says that there's incidental fish sales. They allow for incidental fish sales on premises, which is exactly what both of you are talking about, you know, so there's no perfect world. You know, I'm glad Jack's is in there, you know, it, it burned everybody that we lost processing area in there, but our concern over the, in the big picture thing is not about throwing Jack's seafood restaurant out of there, but to, just to keep from having the little bit of area that's left, you know, essentially chopped up with, with more of that visiting server, serving area. And honestly, you know, if he had, if he had a deep pocket, you know, from C Street car up to the bridge, is, there's a ton of property there, and, you know, as a community, I've been through two or three different design charrettes where people, we all try to figure out what can we do with this property. So there are, there are areas that are, that are there, you know. So, yeah, I probably didn't give you the answer you wanted, but that's the best I can do. Thank you.
Thank you. And something to add is, the definition of coastal-related is it's dependent on a coastal-dependent use, so like a fish counter would be coastal-related if it needed the, the fish from the area, you know, that were fished in the area to sell, whereas if it's just fish from Canada, it's not coastal-related.
And it seems to me like to Mr. Bates's points, that in the implementation phase, you know, having people, if you get to diverge from the, the preferred use regime as an interim use or something like that, then a concession should be a right to fish, you know, a, a concession should be something that goes on title, advises that this was a temporary thing, and in exchange, you don't ever get to bark about the fact that it smells like fish because Pacific Choice is right next to you, or, you know, it smells, or you got a lot of noisy things at all hours that don't make it an attractive place to put a hotel or something like that. I mean, I think those are the kinds of things that help build some protections beyond just zoning and land use. But I'm trying to brainstorm, but that's really not at the, the land use plan level. I can't really be enumerated that way. I don't think that's kind of too specific. So I think a lot of this has to shake out when we get to the implementation stage, but, but at least philosophically, that there's a recognition that interim uses do endanger you know, prodo- or do- you know, preferred uses or whatever the word language is, and should be treated carefully because they can lead to that slippery slope effect, or at least make an area less attractive to the, the preferred use, the, the industrial use. But I, I want to say to what my fellow commissioners, I'm glad you're on board, Kristen. You have a far, this is very nuanced stuff. It's easy to run afoul of the coastal staff, and I appreciate the level of expertise that you bring to this, and I'm trusting you a lot on this, and I feel like we're in good hands to a large extent, so I don't want to second-guess much of this. That's part of the reason I don't have many comments.
It is nice that you are trying to stay focused on the general plan, but also do know what the Coastal Commission is expecting and trying to mitigate some of those issues ahead of time. So, good work. It looks like maybe Jen um, has something that she wants to say, or her hand might have been raised.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. I just want to thank everybody um, for the really interesting discussion and especially, you know, just letting um, letting people talk for more than the, the limit of three minutes, because I learned a lot, and it's been really helpful to hear from Ken Bates, and really good discussion. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Um, anything further from commissioners? We will, uh, yeah, adjourned. Uh, we move to other reports and communications, and I would just like to say that um, maybe for just some Zoom etiquette, like if perhaps Commissioner or whoever, if a commissioner is on Zoom, that they could stay unmuted, so they'd have the opportunity to interject during our discussions, because they tend to go pretty loose in having to try to figure out who's raising their hand, or maybe it got left, so I don't know if we could just make that kind of policy going forward. Okay, that would be helpful for me at least, and I think whoever the commissioner is on the Zoom would be. And then keep everyone else muted.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, cool. Oh, sure, step forward. Did something you'd like to say?
Yes, I would very appreciate it. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name's Nada Roy, and I live in the city of Eureka. And um, originally, I am a professional Olympic gymnastics coach, thirty-four plus years, and professional rollerblader for ten and a half years before kids, three times world champion. My proposal for the city of Eureka is to connect the bike path from uh, city of Eureka to the city of Arcata. I think it would be wonderful. That way we could, it would be safe for the people without going on the highway or over the bridge. And ideally, if we could add some little gymnastics equipment on the sides, like push-ups and bars and P bars, traveling rings. It would be wonderful, and it's great for fitness and the morale. And under California Coastal Committee under three-one-one, um, give me a second. It's been a while. A project that uh, suits the community. It has priority over any other project. So um, yes, that is my proposal. Also, in the Halverson's Park, if we could add a roller ring slash ice skating ring, that would be wonderful as well. It would be great for Christmas for the ice rings and anyone that plays hockey. So yes, that is my proposal. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I just want to give you a quick response, just so you know that the, that the Eureka Arcata Trail is on the books, and if you just wait another year or so, you'll see it become a reality. I don't know about the swinging rings and, and all that yet, but.
Anything else? No. We're adjourned. Thank you.